Grade seven, will we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence. Thank you. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be also brought up for discussion at the meeting. Not all items listed in fact may be discussed and other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting will be live streamed for cable. A recording of this meeting will also be posted on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website, wb-cam.org. We would like to introduce Lily Motta tonight, she's our student representative. Welcome Lily.
Good.
And could we get approval of the minutes from our January 10th School Committee meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have some recognitions tonight, the Voice of Democracy and Patriot Pen Contest winners. Mrs. Page.
Thank you. So I'm just going to give you a brief description of what the Patriot Pen Essay and the Voice of Democracy are, and then we're going to give some certificates to our winners. The Patriot Pen Essay was a prompt of 300 to 400 words on how can I be a good American. Students in grades six through eight from West Bridgewater, Bridgewater, and East Bridgewater all competed for this award. The award includes a cash scholarship prize along with a certificate. So we want to congratulate our Patriot Pen Award winners. First place, Mackenzie Craig.
Second place, the fabulous Maxine Madeiras.
And our third place winner, Caitlin Barry. For the Voice of Democracy is an essay with an oration component where the student records themselves on a prompt. This year's prompt was, "America, where do we go from here?" Students from West Bridgewater, Bridgewater, and East Bridgewater all competed for this award. This award also includes a cash scholarship prize along with a certificate. Second place winner goes to Ella Dunbury.
Thank you.
I'd like to say congratulations, good job by anyone.
Fantastic.
Yeah, no, congratulations. It's always great to recognize our students for their achievement and their hard work. And it's recognized throughout the whole region, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a short break so everybody can get back home, do some more studying. Okay, we're back. Superintendent's update, school choice, Mr. Bodwell.
All right, so as of right now, as of today, we have 103 applicants through school choice, which is about normal for what we have each year. The applications do run through February 28th, and we are getting phone calls, so if people have phone calls or questions, they should just call the superintendent's office. And Mrs. LaCroy is very happy to answer any questions and provide additional information if they need it. So we anticipate probably being in the mid 150s or so, as we are each year. Just the COVID-at-home testing, so we recently did change to at-home testing. The test kits were sent home with the students who signed up on Friday. Kudos to our administration and secretaries for getting them out on the half-day. And we did send an email reminder home on Wednesday, so people knew that they were becoming, and if they wanted to pick them up, they certainly could. We have, at this time, 435 students in the district signed up for the at-home testing. We also sent out on Friday the updated guidelines, so there are more information for families, also more information on how to sign up. Since we are now moving, because we signed up for the at-home testing, we're moving away from test and stay and the contact tracing, but we are going to symptomatic testing. So there are links for people who have not previously signed up for symptomatic testing to sign up, and there's also a link for them to join the at-home testing. There's a deadline each week of Wednesday for the following two weeks, so we'll be putting that out there again tomorrow, so people know and have the ability to sign up. But even though we are doing symptomatic testing and people are signed up, we are still calling home each time, so then they'll go down to see the nurse if they feel they are symptomatic. Even though they do have the consent, they will still call home and check with the family that they want them to test. People can sign up all the way through April, so this is an ongoing thing, so if you did not sign up, you can still sign up for the at-home testing. And just kind of related, that the mask mandate will stay in effect through February 28th until DESI gets back to us, if they change that date. So just, I think it's a move that's been well received, I think it's moving to going back to kind of the way it was in terms of testing if there are symptoms and not doing the contact tracing within the schools. Budget update, so on February 28th will be our next School Committee meeting, that will be our budget presentation. We also do meet as a School Committee on March 7th, and then we will be meeting with the Selectmen on March 16th, and a Finance Committee on March 21st, I believe both are at 7:00 p.m. So we're looking forward and working hard with Mrs. Grant, we're providing lots of information. We'll have a thorough presentation for you, we'll go line by line. We'll have also supplemental information in the presentation that will explain what our priorities are, where we're moving, and how we're best going to fit the needs of our students and staff. Nature's Classroom. First, I want to thank Mrs. Wenzel for coming, and Mr. Lehman. I will say before she gets to the podium that this is a trip that, you know, when I was a Howard School principal, I had the opportunity to attend for several years. I truly believe it's the best trip we offer in the district. It really does a lot for our kids and our staff and our families. The kids really, really enjoy it, and I can't thank the chaperones enough, both our staff and the other parents that help out and guardians. It really is a memory of a lifetime, so thank you for all you do in bringing this back. We had a two-year hiatus, we've continued to be in contact with them to make sure things are working well, but Ms. Wenzel, if you want to talk about it, it'd be great.
Thank you very much. Basically, we just want to give you an update about the sixth grade trip planned. So we've gone for 20 years, as Mr. Bodwell talked about, so this will be our 21st trip. We did take the two-year hiatus, clashed there with everything that came to us versus us going to them. So we are really looking forward to returning to Broughton and being able to experience the trip the same way. We consider this trip to be an essential part of the sixth grade curriculum and the culminating experience of the entire elementary program. One of the things that we love about it, sort of their send-off to their elementary mile that they've come through. It incorporates every aspect of curriculum and skills we teach and consider it essential for a successful transition to the high school. On top of that, it's extremely just fun for both children and adults alike. So the Nature's Classroom program features lessons and activities that combine the sixth grade curriculum frameworks with team-building skills and outdoor education. The result is a truly unique program that reinforces learning from the sixth grade year and presents it in a new and accessible way. Students who do not always start in a traditional classroom setting are suddenly able to learn in a completely new and open environment. The nature of the program also stresses the importance of working together while also building individual self-confidence and self-reliance. From building a geodome to designing a roller coaster, two desk sections, to building a habitat for specific animals, to better understanding the world around them, Nature's Classroom provides students with a truly immersive educational experience. So despite the challenges, obviously, by the coronavirus epidemic we've been going through, in the Omicron surge, we're confident that we can safely attend this program. As it stands now, we have, the Nature's Classroom requirements are very much aligned with DESI alignments, or DESI requirements. They require the negative PCR test and a negative rapid test before departure, and we've spoken with Superintendent Bodwell and the head nurse, Julie Diedrickson, about the logistics involving of this, and it was a consensus that these requirements may be loosened as the case numbers go down. However, we felt it was prudent to have a plan in place regardless. In the upcoming weeks, we'll be contacting different programs to figure out the logistics of testing for the attendees of the trip. We've also discussed utilizing school staff and resources to administer those rapid tests on the Monday before we departure. In the event of student testing positive before or during the trip, it's similar to the school, it's the same, basically, school guidelines that will be followed, and we're currently assembling staff and volunteers to chaperon the trip. These lists will be made with the possibility of last-minute changes and additions in the event of positive tests. We currently have 93% of the grade is signed up and ready to go, so our numbers are right where they normally are. Parents seem to be very positive and very excited about this trip, and as we said, the moment in Nature's Classroom is following the strict DESI guidelines regarding indoor masks. The glorious part about Nature's Classroom is we spend a lot of time outside. They also plan to have meals outside when possible, weather-dependent, so April, we could have beautiful weather, it could look like it does now, we'll kind of see what happens, but they are following all the DESI guidelines and have protocols in place as well. Any questions? We leave Monday, April 11th, and we come home Thursday, April 14th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Lily, do you remember it?
I do remember. Yeah.
Mrs. Page, just an update from the Ask-a-Visit.
So yeah, so the February 1st update has come and gone for the first report, they gave us extended time due to the COVID. So what I needed to do was just report out any changes in the fundamental elements that we had. None have changed. The only one that we were not in good standing with was the curriculum, and we knew that, and that's one that, you know, we're working with our Director of Curriculum and the coordinators up here at the Middle Senior High School, and the goal is to have all the curriculum in a common template. So we're well on our way, we're just not there yet. The only other thing that we, they had asked us to update them on if there were any substantial changes from the visit, and we don't have any substantial changes that would have changed the outcome of the visit, so that was a no, we don't have any. And other than that, it was submitted, and I have not had any response yet from them.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. Next, I just want to give a mask litigation update. We have done this previously, so I thought since more information has come to us, I'd provide that to the committee and to others. So as of January 25th, the Massachusetts Appeals Court, which was the Children's Health Rights of Massachusetts Incorporated versus Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and others, and West Bridgewater has considered us one of the others that were named in this lawsuit. So the preliminary injunction was denied by the court. The judge affirmed that DESI and the school districts have the authority to impose the mask mandate, and the unfortunate thing, again, for West Bridgewater is we continue to incur attorney fees in the thousands of dollars as we continue to fight this lawsuit that we're named in. And just some of the information that was recorded in the lawsuit by the judge, that the scientific record before me, me and the judge strongly supports the proposition that masking reduces the likelihood of COVID-19 outbreaks in schools, and plaintiffs have failed to demonstrate a likelihood of success on the merits of showing that the school districts lack the authority to impose mask mandates. So again, we are still named, so we will have to continue this until it goes to the next level. But just thought it was important to share this with you, so we know where we are and the potential costs that will occur in this year's budget, and hopefully not moving forward.
And I think I asked this at the last meeting, if you don't have a number, an exact number, it's fine, but what are we looking at for attorney fees at this point?
Right now, we're upwards of about $7,000. So if we have significantly more costs related to this, if it does jeopardize other budget line items, and we call.
Thank you. So I've been following this mask lawsuit pretty closely, and I think one of the main things that it's trying to do is to relieve the school of the mandates that they're being forced to follow and to enforce. And I understand $7,000 is a lot of money in our budget, but I believe our taxpayers are paying a lot more than $7,000 to enforce these mandates and also to even, I mean, if you think of an individual household, how much have you spent this past two years in COVID-related expenses? I mean, purchasing masks alone, changing things because of close contact tracing and having to quarantine, and what that's cost each individual family. And if you take that $7,000 and divide it by the number of taxpayers in our town, I think that that's minimal. And so, you know, I think I am also concerned that we don't spend money that is not necessary, but I think the $7,000 is truly, you know, a drop in the hat of what we've spent, just in money that we've gotten alone from the government for COVID. You know, I know we look at that as, here we've got money coming in and it helps our budget, but that's money from the government, so that's taxpayer money too. You know, when we say the tests are free in the school, the government's paying for that, so the government gets their money from our taxpayer dollars, and I think these are things that we need to think about when we're talking about these mandates and what's COVID costing. And now we're just talking about the money part, I mean, this isn't even getting into what COVID's cost us. I read a little deeper into this, because they said plaintiffs have failed to demonstrate the correct information. The judge also made a comment, and part of the determination was that the masks aren't a medical device. And so I would urge you guys to kind of look into that further on your own and just to think about it, because if the mask isn't a medical device, then I'm not sure what it is that we're using it for. So it's very interesting, and I'm hoping that, you know, it continues, we continue to make improvements and we make changes as we learn more, like DESI has with the close contact tracing, you know, fixing what they started and learning more about it and learning that, you know, it wasn't doing what they thought it was going to do. I do have to, one last thing I have to say, I'm a little disappointed about, like, when they learn new information, they wait for something like tests getting in people's hands. Like, if we learn something new and we learn, like, it's better, we can do better than what we knew before, I think we should do it as soon as we know it and not wait for these deadlines or these dates that, you know, is set forth by people that I believe they're trying to do their best, and they're trying to make a decision for, you know, our entire, I don't know, state. But, I mean, we were elected to represent our community and to make decisions for them, and I've talked to so many people that have said, you know, my opinion doesn't matter. And I'm like, I, you know, and it's people that have been hired in our school district and people that have been elected in our town have said this to me, and our opinions do matter. No one in our school district was hired because of solely on their expertise and whatever their job is. They were hired because who they were, and that's why we interview people, that's why we elect certain people to represent, and I don't know, I just want people to continue just to, just think about these things. Like, if this lawsuit is saying, you know, it was denied, the preliminary injunction, because they compared, they compared masks to wearing snow pants, and I'm like, oh, okay, well, I don't know, I don't put snow pants over my face, so, you know, snow pants, there's nothing contagious, you know, if I get frostbite, you know, I don't know why, then, so they're trying to say it's not a medical device, so then what is it? There's a lot of questions, and I think we need to continue to ask, and I know we've all received a couple emails from people, and, you know, when you get back to people, I want you, you know, we have, you know, these guidelines that we're looking at and spending a boatload of time, I mean, talk about, talk about what's cost us in money. I did a little survey with a couple people I know and said, over the past two years, how much of your time do you think you've spent on COVID-related things versus your education and your actual job? And, I don't know, you can pick a number in your own head of what you think you've spent on that, and then just do your math on what you think that costs. And I think we're going to get to a good place here.
Thank you. And finally, I just want to give a mid-year update on my six goals that presented at the beginning of the year. These goals are in conjunction with the other administrators' goals, we're working hand-in-hand on many of them. At the end of the year, I'll provide the School Committee a final report that will go over all the goals with evidence and information, as well as feedback on the four standards and many indicators, and I'll share a Google Doc that will provide evidence for all of you. The first one, I won't read, you know, the entire goal, but it has to do with addressing the lack of resources, resources or concerns for the lack of resources in our district, something that we brought up throughout the budget last year, so I thought it's a, this is an ongoing goal, this is something that's going to take many years, I think, to get to the point where we feel comfortable and confident that the resources we have in the district are supporting the needs of our kids. So a few of the things that we've done this year, not all of them, but the School Committee Budget Subcommittee, we have the Finance Committee and the Town Administrator on December 2nd, and we answered many questions and concerns that they had. I thought it was a very worthwhile and important meeting for us, because we, again, once again, I mean, we met with them a couple times last year, along with the Selectmen. I feel the more, you know, Mrs. Grant, myself, and our School Committee can talk about our budget and our needs, the better prepared people will be in understanding what our needs are moving forward. I continue to meet weekly with the administrative team to prioritize our staff needs in the building for FY '23 and beyond, and part of that is we've created a document to prioritize our needs in the district. I think that's important, we're looking at funding that we have through ESAR, other potential grants, but we know and we continue to say, once ESAR goes away and even some grant money, there's going to be a cliff, so we need to identify where that cliff is and how we can backfill it, so we don't get to a massive cliff. The funding needs to be there to support the needs of our kids. Our staff has done a great job, I must be honest, looking at grants that we can receive, and we're applying for other ones to supplement our budget at this time, and we continue to look at Chapter 70 funding and our per pupil expenditure within the district to look where our needs are and where the deficits are. The second goal has to do instructional leadership, again, a core value for us, a core importance in terms of getting the best out of our kids and our educators. So our administrative team, our instructional team leaders, and our middle, senior, high school coordinators and teachers continue to focus on using data to inform decisions and drive our next steps. The schools have created MCAS action plans, and the progress was reviewed at our last School Committee meeting. I meet weekly with our administrative team, and we talk about instructional leadership constantly. This year, we worked to schedule more time at schools, so every other meeting I have with the administrators is at their building, so I'm in the building, but we're trying to schedule time on top of that to do walkthroughs, be there for arrival, be there for dismissal, so I'm seeing what's going on more in the building. Part of my new Superintendent induction program, I meet two to three times a month with my coach, as well as other superintendents, and we discuss instructional leadership, continued collaboration with ST Math and Title I to address students who need to have areas that need improvement, and I think some of the showcase things, we're planning for May 12th, our academic showcase, which will have representatives from all schools and hopefully all grade levels here in the middle, senior, high school, showing off what great things are going on in all the buildings, as well as trying to incorporate the World Culture Night. So I think that will be a great event, and we've got some other stuff going on with the 200th anniversary of West Bridgewater that we'll be incorporating into that, and also our Summer Cat/Wildcat Academy, which we plan to run again, hopefully using the grant funding that we've applied for to address the needs of our kids. Our third goal was professional development, again, looking at our professional development plan for this year, having building-based programs that were the areas of need within each building, the middle, senior, high school, diversity, equity, inclusion, at the Howard School, standards-based learning culminating with a standards-based report card, and at the Roselle and the Spring Street School, the science of reading has been, have been the focus areas. We're already planning for our next school year, we've got some things in place through some grant funding and some focal areas, so we'll be working on that, and forming a committee for the second half of the middle, senior, high school, the elementary. If the grant goes through for our literacy, that may be filled up for our PD days, but there's some opportunity for our middle, senior, high school to schedule things, and we want staff involvement in planning of that professional development. We've provided additional training, such as our safety care training, reading instruction, and social-emotional training outside of the professional development days. Middle, senior, high school staff were trained in the STAR Diagnostic Assessments, which is really helping to drive their instruction at the middle school level, and we've had staff attend a workshop on mental health needs in the classroom. Fourth goal, social-emotional learning, again, always something that we need to integrate into our schools and really into the daily lives of our kids. One of the real encouraging things are we have developed social-emotional learning teams at each school, and they're bringing in staff and they're working on things within the school, having real great conversations about social-emotional health of our kids. The district, we focused on the pride recognitions in each building. We have a plan to coordinate with an outside consultant to review the SEL needs in the district and with each school building, so we're coordinating someone to come in, kind of almost do an audit of where we stand and what our greatest needs are, and that's from an SEL expert from one of our collaboratives. We continue to offer ongoing sharing of professional development opportunities for our staff. The PTO is funding SEL curriculum and resources at the elementary level and creating a plan to integrate SEL into all aspects of the student's educational experience. The fifth goal, the school building project, working with the MSBA to submit a statement of interest for a potential down-the-road elementary school project. This one I had to put on hold until January 28th, because they did not open the window until then, and prior to that, there really was no information to be had. So since it opened, I was able to get online and look at information that was submitted for previous projects. So we're gathering that information for the SOI, and we'll be submitting it hopefully in the near future. I did share with the School Committee the information on the voting requirements moving forward, some of them are new from previous years, and the statement of interest period closes on April 29th, so we do have some time, looking forward to doing that. And finally, if the goal six was effective communication, I think was always important. I commend the building principals and all others for their hard work in this, as well as with all the goals, but we've continued to update COVID-19 information on our website, sending out all relevant information to families and staff. Other frequent emails, I rely on our building administrators and others to provide me with information, I send it out. Again, the goal is to update people in different pockets and things might be of interest or noteworthy, so they can see that. Postings on our live feed on the website, Twitter and Facebook, visibility at after-school events and evening events myself within the district. It truly is the best part of my day, being out at Spring Street School for arrival and dismissal almost every day, to see the kids come and then see the kids take off in the afternoon. Hosting of Superintendent Coffee Hours has been great, we've, we continue to do them virtual, I've said all along, I don't mind doing them in person, but the feedback I get from families of parents, it's easier sometimes to sign on, they could even be working and then they can sign on and off, they don't have the travel time. I also host a monthly Superintendent's Council, which is made up of high school students, I really enjoy that. I think they enjoy coming, maybe it's mostly for the bagels I provide, but I think that I love the conversation with them, they're great kids. I'm working with the TV studio to create a promotional video, something that we can put up on our website, I think it'd be important for school choice, but also for us, maybe moving into the community. moving into the community. They could have a quick link and see what, what's the community look like. We're still working up. I'm looking to create a superintendent podcast series, where I would be interviewing students, or staff, or others. I think that would be something we could add. And again, with effective communication, we have been working with the food pantry since July, this past July. We had our last official meeting in January, and the food pantry is moving to an off-site location. We've had good, ongoing communication with them. I want to thank everyone that joined that subcommittee. And from the first meeting, we said, our goal is for them to find a place that is better for them moving forward. And they have, they've got a space that's bigger, more accessible, and they're very happy in talking to representatives. So their plan is to move out on February 22nd during school vacation and start distribution in March. So those, those are the, kind of the, the quick update on the goals and information. Again, more will be provided at the end of the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Bardwell.
You're welcome.
I have two questions.
Sure.
So goal number six, I want to say that I truly appreciate how communicated you are, both as a school committee member, but as a parent as well. I mean, I follow you on Twitter, and all the Facebook posts, and I wonder if you consider, and this is just coming from me as a busy parent, the, your emails, your family update emails.
Mm-hmm.
Organizing them a little differently, and maybe sending them, you know, on Fridays. I personally don't always get to them when they come more frequently, so I just wonder if you had formatted them a little more like a newsletter, like Howard and RLM and Spring send out the newsletters, where you know exactly what you're looking for. You know, if you want sports updates, they're in the lower right-hand corner of the Google Doc, and so on and so forth. Just something to consider. I think it might make it a little more accessible for parents. And then the other question that I had was regarding goal four, social-emotional. So you said the PTO is funding of SEL curriculum and resources. Has that happened? Is that in progress, or is that going to happen?
I think it's, it's for next year.
It's for next year, okay.
It is funded and already approved by PTO, so it's really in the pipeline for it.
That's great. And would it, would it be, you said, for elementary? So for all three elementaries?
Except the Howard School, in, I think, whatever, the four through six, besides all their support, whatever, in my, or in absence to respect and stuff like that.
Okay. So that was my follow-up question, is if we're in the process of looking at SEL curriculum, or if there's one that we're looking at specifically, if it had been decided, so.
And that's part of why we want to do that audit, to kind of see where we're at, see where, you know, and it'd be good to get someone from the outside looking in to give us some good feedback on that.
Yeah, I look forward to that very much. I think SEL, I know we think about elementary, but I think it's really important that it also be integrated throughout the middle, senior, high school, across all of the grades. You know, maybe not what you would think of as traditional lessons, per se, but just interwoven throughout the day-to-day. Like you said, SEL is overlaps, or is the foundation for everything. So it's important that we consider middle, senior, high school as well.
I agree. And I think that's the beauty of having these SEL teams, that, that really are kind of the, a good representation of the different schools, with different grade levels, different subject areas, because they're working on these things, and they're developing, putting them right into the, the kids' hands, so.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Our student representative update. Lilly.
At the Spring Street School, the preschool has been busy learning about animals and nature and animal habitats. We are looking forward to learning about the people, places in our own community and community helpers. In the garden, we've been working with letter sounds and CVC words. It gave us pride when they're able to independently read like one of these words. Team members and the introduction of place value, the once and tense place, has been a map focus, and they have been very busy to connect the states of matter and we have looked exploring the change from one state to another. At the Roselle McDonald School, we are excited to have this traditional and traditional programs back at the liberal school. The winter sessions of first-hand animal drawings have so fabulous built up quickly, even led to the need of adding additional sessions. The RLM School Council wrapped a year-long project this past week. At this time last year, they started brainstorming to bring some ideas to support Peter Kellner, lovingly known as the Suit Man. The student council worked with the fire department last spring to sell raffle tickets to order bride-to-school and fire trucks. To their amazement, they collected over $1,200 from their fundraiser. They used that money to purchase and create blankets as they could. In between boxes of deliveries, student council members with, council members that worked on writing letters and stamps to tie each blanket. On Wednesday, February 2nd, these kids passed along their school donation of over 100 blankets to the Suit Man to distribute to veteran homes, shelters, and those many. They were able to talk to Peter and see his infamous red bus, and learn about more ways to help. These kids' smiles were big, and Peter's tears of joy showed them all what it truly means to help. One thing Miss Inos continuously reminds them is that it feels good to do good, and this incredible event will motivate our youngest Wildcats to continue to do even more kind acts for others. We were grateful for Mr. Kellner, we were grateful Mr. Kellner was able to take time out of his busy schedule to meet with the student council. We look forward to collaborating again with him in the future, and continuing to teach our school community more about his work. At the Howard School, the Little Leo's Club is hosting a mini war between the classes of the Howard School. Students have put on their school pride and donated a lot of change within the first weeks of February. The wedding process will win extra proceeds, and all the proceeds will be donated to the Lions Club I Research Fund, Research Fund. The Howard Student Council are working on upcoming theme days for the school, while also planning Howard's next school fundraiser. Students at the Howard School participated in their pride-themed festivities on the 28th, on the 28th in their classrooms to discuss the topic of termination. Students celebrated the last day of January with a pajama movie and popcorn day. Sixth-grade students at the Howard School held a museum exhibit to highlight what they learned about Egypt and Egypt, and the different characters that is about civilization. And the school council will be reviewing the spring parent survey, while also beginning our next year's school improvement plan. And then finally, at the middle, senior, high school, student athletes gathered in the auditorium for a webinar hosted by the NIAA. Students watched Taylor's message in the, in the playbook, both geared towards educating students on the effects of drug and alcohol. Students are in the process of having discussions with their teachers about recommendations for the courses for next year. Students will do their course selections over February 3. All students in grades seven through five watch the film A, which is geared toward educating them on anxieties to help them better understand it. Students debrief with their parablog teachers at the end of the conclusion of the film. And finally, the principal's council met on January 23rd and helps us great practice and conversation. This is a great time for students to share their ideas and suggestions for things going on in this world.
Thank you, Lilly. On to business, the 2022-2023 school calendar. Mr. Bardwell has handed it out. Mr. Bardwell, do you have any?
No, I think just as we have in the past, it's a good chance to put more eyes on it, and to review it. We, the administrators have taken a look at it. It stays pretty consistent with years past. So, but any feedback can be given, you know, at the next meeting, or if there's anything major, Mrs. LaCroix could take a look at it.
All right. So we'll take a look at it, and if we have any questions, we'll bring them up next meeting.
Do you guys want to take into consideration the student that came last year, who wanted us to look at the day after Halloween, having that off?
I'm, I'm, to be honest, not really in favor of the, the day off after, it's a Tuesday this year, I believe. It was, Halloween's a Monday, so it's a Tuesday, so it'd be midweek. I'm not sure of any, I don't want to speak for everybody, but that would be just my feelings on it. So I don't know if anyone else has any feelings.
Well, I truly appreciated Sam coming out and giving his, giving his feedback. I mean, it took, it took a lot for him. And I don't want to minimize that. I'm looking over the podium like he's there now. I don't want to minimize that at all. I truly considered what he said, and I want to encourage him and, you know, students to give their feedback all the time. When I look at the overall calendar, though, and I look at the number of days off, and, you know, snow days that push us closer and closer to June, I, I agree with you, Bill. I'm not in favor of the day after Halloween off. I think that when we look at the overall picture, it's just not best for the school district.
Okay.
I do know that some of the districts that have, for students, it is a professional day for staff, and we don't have that extra day for our staff. I think that quite possibly could be a consideration, if we had a full day, professional development day that we had to put in somewhere. But otherwise, I do think it's kind of an interruption in the learning process to take a midweek day off of learning.
I agree with that, too. I mean, the sentiment is, it's not the easiest day to get through. And I also appreciated Sam's dedication and coming to speak on it. But I also agree that it's, it will impact the schedule, and I think we should just keep it as a, as a school day.
All right. Thank you very much.
No teacher complaints of the day after Halloween. Excitement or overtired from Halloween?
All right. Middle, senior, high school program of studies, is this going to be a voting issue? This is Mrs. Page.
So I believe the document was shared with you with the changes. Everything in the handbook, I mean, sorry, the program of studies, any of the changes are in red. And then you'll see the itemized by pages of where there were changes. Some were just grammar, some changes that were missed maybe prior to, I don't know if you want me to go through the whole list, or you've had it, or if you have specific questions?
I did not have any. I'm not sure if anyone else did.
Oh. Did you not get the page with the?
Oh, no, sorry. I think he said he didn't have any questions.
We don't have, no, we didn't have, we had a chance to, to go through. As I said, I didn't have any questions.
Oh, okay.
So if, if there are no questions, like to make a motion to approve as, as given to us by Mrs. Page?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Paige, what are they doing, the course selections?
So next week, we'll be meeting with all the grades to go over, what we typically do is have the coordinators come down, the councils come down, and they will go and meet with, we typically meet with the ninth and 10th graders together, then the 11th grader separately, and the middle school separately. And they'll go through and explain the process. We'll remind them again of how they do it all online. So we'll meet them, answer any questions that they have. We've been encouraging teachers these last two weeks to make sure that they're speaking with the students about recommendations for next year. They've done a great job the last few years. Really, you know, sometimes we'd have times where kids would be in classes, and then two weeks in, they realize that's not where they should be, and they ask for some changes. And it disrupts them and the class. So the last couple years has been much better, in that students are kind of placed and accept the placement, because they're having those meaningful conversations with the teachers as to why they're being placed at a certain level. So we'll go through that. Once we draw all the requirements, all the requests from the students, we'll sit with our coordinators, look at the number of requests, decide the sections, and then we'll start the scheduling process. The students do have an opportunity before they leave school. Our goal is to have the kids have the schedules before they leave, to make changes. They'll have an opportunity to change once the schedule's in place. And then when they come back in the fall, they again will have the first two weeks to settle in, see, you know, maybe a class isn't exactly what they thought it would be, to make some changes those first two weeks, both in the fall and the second semester.
And I want to give Mrs. Page and her staff a lot of credit, because our students sign up for eight classes, and we don't have traditional study halls. So it's not easy scheduling every student in the building for eight classes, and making sure all the teachers fit, and the kids fit, and they're doing a very good job.
I always feel bad for the freshmen, because they sometimes don't always get what they want. But by the time you get to the senior year, it's a good feeling.
It's a lot of work, but it's come done well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. Inclusion Matters update. Mrs. Dragonetti.
Thank you. The mission of Inclusion Matters, as West Bridgewater Special Education Parent Advisory Council, is to build inclusive schools and communities. We do this by supporting families of students with IEPs and 504s, and including regular educated parents by offering advice, advocacy within the school system, and opportunities for education and community building through regular workshops and events for parents, guardians, and families. It's not too late to join us for February's parent workshop, Nothing About Us Without Us, Designing Onramps For Our Kids' Inclusion In IEP Team Meetings, which will be held this Thursday, February 10th at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Chair, from her own experiences, Chair of Inclusion Matters, Dr. Melissa Winchell, will make a brief presentation on why and how to include our kids in their IEP meetings, even before they turn 14, and are formally invited by the school district. Following her presentation, a panel of Massachusetts parents will share the creative ways they've engaged their children with disabilities in their own IEP meetings. Come to learn how your child, no matter how young, can find their place on an IEP team. Looking ahead, please mark your calendars for our March event, Sitting Down With Brennan S. C. Rakun. Brennan is an actor, singer, author, fitness trainer, and motivational speaker. Born in Bangkok, Thailand, Brennan was diagnosed with cerebral palsy at birth, and was given less than a 10%, 10% chance of surviving. Now, at 30 years old and more alive than ever, he's excited to sit down to share his story of the twists, turns, and triumphs of living a life on wheels. He will focus on the importance of diversity, equity, embracing adversity, and inclusion, and how we can all use diversity to help ourselves and each other live our best lives every day. This will be held on Thursday, March 10th at 7:00 PM. In the words of Norman Kunk, "When inclusive education is fully embraced, we abandon the idea that children have to become normal in order to contribute to the world. We begin to look beyond typical ways of becoming valued members of the community, and in doing so, begin to realize the achievable goal of providing all children with an authentic sense of belonging." For more information about Inclusion Matters and upcoming events, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA, or by visiting our website at www.inclusionmattersma.com.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Warrants. Warrant Subcommittee Report. Mrs. Dragonetti.
The following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year 2022. Bill warrants. On January 6th, 2022, no warrant was submitted. On January 13th, 2022, a warrant in the total of $176,538.44. On January 20th, 2022, a warrant in total of $48,925,096. And on January 27th, 2022, a warrant in total of $49,463. The following two payroll warrants were issued. On January 7th, 2022, a warrant in total of $530,141.75. And on January 21st, 2022, $509,575.49. As always, all warrants are public record, and ones signed are available in the Selectman's Office for review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues are issues that would violate student confidentiality, cannot be addressed during public comment. Do we have any takers? Seeing none, we'll move on. To our announcements, district-wide, February 21st through the 25th, winter break is already here, all right. District meetings, school council meetings, the middle, senior, high school, March 7th at 2:30 in the Guidance Conference Room. Howard School, February 17th at 1:45 in the Howard Conference Room. Roselle McDonald, March 1st at 3:30, it's virtual. Spring Street School, February 8th and March 2nd, 3:00 PM, and it is virtual. The PTO will meet February 15th at 7 o'clock at Barrett's Alehouse. And our athletic boosters will meet February 9th at 7:00 PM in the middle, senior, high school Learning Commons. At the middle, senior, high school, we have the principal's coffee hour on February 11th at 8:00 AM. And then I was asked to make one little announcement here. Tomorrow, February 8th, we have our signups for Mr. WB, so our scholarship fund. So that'll be taking place. So I'm not sure how many of the high school kids are watching us right now, but, but signups will be tomorrow. So moms and dads, if you want your children to be part of this, that would be, to give them a little nudge in the morning. So, thank you. Our next regular scheduled school committee budget meetings dates will be on Monday, February 28th, at 6:30 in the Learning Commons, is our budget meeting. Our next regular scheduled school committee meeting will be March 7th at 6:30 here in the Learning Commons as well. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.